To order the special meeting for October 25th, 2018. Roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Matoye?
Here.
Ms. Flour?
Here.
Mr. Davenport?
Here.
Ms. Franco?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Dr. Navarro?
Here.
Okay, do we have any cards for? No cards? Having no cards, we're going to go into closed session.
Okay. Great.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is a special public hearing, October 25th, 2018, called to order at 4:01 PM. We did not conclude our closed session, so we will be going back into closed session after the meeting is over. And so we're going to start with opening ceremonies, a moment of reflection, to get our minds in the right place. And Karen can lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I need a motion on the agenda.
Approval of the agenda? Second.
Okay, it's moved by Mrs. Flour, seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, welcome, everyone. I like your little scarves. They're very bright. Oh, good. So, shall I just read this then? Oh, I know, sorry. So, Dr. Navarro, before we open the public hearing and provide our charter petitioner an opportunity to make a presentation, would you like to provide any information?
I'd like to ask Davina Harden from AALRR, Atkinson-Andelson, Lawyer Romo and Rudd, to provide information regarding the overview of the process on behalf of the district.
Good afternoon. Davina Harden from Atkinson-Andelson. I'm counsel for the district, and so I've been asked to provide an overview of what the process is and how it will proceed. The Charter Schools Act provides that persons interested in forming a charter school to be located within the geographical boundaries of a local school district to submit a charter to that school district's governing board for consideration upon receipt of a certain number of signatures of either parents and guardians or teachers supporting the proposed charter school. The charter petitioners for the International School for Science and Culture proposed a TK through 8th grade charter school to open in the 2019-20 school year. Once the charter petition is submitted to the district, it is formally received by the district governing board at a public meeting. In the case of the International School for Science and Culture, the governing board of Newport Mesa formally received the petition at its September 25th, 2018, meeting. This receipt by the governing board commenced the timelines for the governing board's consideration of and action on this charter. The governing board is then required to hold a public hearing on the provisions of the charter, at which time the board is supposed to consider the level of support for the petition by teachers employed by the district, other employees of the district, and parents. And the district board is holding this public hearing at the special meeting today. The governing board has 60 days from its formal receipt of the charter petition, unless an extension is mutually agreed upon between the parties, to make a decision on whether to grant or deny the charter. At this time, it is anticipated that the governing board's decision on the International School for Science and Culture will be made at a special board meeting on November 15th, 2018. A charter is required to contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of a number of items, and the petitioners are also obligated to provide the district additional information. Because charter schools are generally exempt from the laws governing school districts, the charter is the document that controls the school's entire operations. So it's the contents of the charter document itself that are extremely important. In other words, with a few exceptions, a charter school is exempt from the provisions of the Education Code that generally regulate public schools in California, and instead it's the plan and the program that they set forth in their charter document that controls the particular charter school's operations, including but not limited to educational program, employment, and fiscal matters. If the district governing board approves a charter, the district becomes responsible for the ongoing oversight of that charter school, to see that it is being operated in an educationally and fiscally and operationally sound manner, and in accordance with the plan and promises that are set forth in the written charter. A few of the areas that are required to be described in the charter are the educational program, measurable people outcomes, the governance of the charter school, employee qualifications, health and safety procedures, and the admission policies and procedures. A district governing board is to grant a charter if it is satisfied that granting the charter is consistent with sound educational practice. In order to deny a charter, a district governing board must make written factual findings specific to the particular charter petition that's under review, setting forth facts which support one or more of the following findings. One, the charter school presents an unsound educational program for the pupils proposed to be enrolled in the charter school. Two, the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the plans set forth in the charter. Three, the petition does not contain the required number of signatures of either teachers or parents. Four, the petition does not contain an affirmation of certain nondiscrimination and admissions requirements. Five, the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of 15 specific topics. And six, the petition does not contain a declaration of whether or not the charter school shall be deemed the exclusive public employer of the employees of the charter school for purposes of the Educational Employment Relations Act. At the public hearing, the focus generally is on the gathering of input from the public, specifically including district employees and parents regarding the proposed charter school, and any presentation that the petitioners may choose to make regarding their charter proposal. The board may choose to ask questions of the district administration, charter school representatives, and/or speakers at the public hearing, but the governing board will not take action to approve or deny the charter today.
Thank you. Okay, so the petitioners may now make a presentation of up to 20 minutes, followed by an opening of the public hearing for the board to receive public input on the provisions of the charter position.
Excellent, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Patricia Gould, and I am the lead petitioner and founding principal for ISIC. Thank you for the opportunity to share information on our charter school, ISIC. As you will see, we are designed to provide parents a choice in their child's education. We will address the critical needs of 21st century education for global citizens through a rigorous, standards-aligned program with emphasis on stream content and practices. As you can see, we are composed of various dedicated and compassionate professionals. Our ISIC's challenging education agenda will be experienced by our students in an academic learning environment, which provides equitable, culturally responsive education, academics along with social and emotional learning, and a safe, engaging, and inclusive environment. So, on our journey to submitting our charter petition, a lot of research was conducted on Newport Mesa schools' test scores, LCAP information, EL master plan, school accountability report cards, EL reclassification data, and district dashboard information. We found many strengths as well as areas of need. We developed our school program to uniquely help service the students of Newport Mesa that are underserved. So why ISIC, and how do we complement and enrich Newport Mesa Unified School District? As a free public charter school, we provide the parents of this community a choice to invest in their child's future through an innovative approach to education. We will be hiring highly qualified credential teachers and staff and provide competitive salaries. Our evaluation system will be based on the California standards for the teaching profession, and we will also provide plenty of opportunities in professional development for classified and certificated. We're also responsible for the CASP, taking the state tests and all the other accountability tests that come up for school districts. We'll also be addressing all of our subgroups. We will address our EL population, our special ed population, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students. All of our student subgroups will be addressed. In addition to that, we have an open door policy. We believe in transparency and in sharing information with parents and the stakeholders. Of course, common core aligned instructional materials are of the essence. So, education for global citizenship is the overarching vision and goal of ISIC. It describes the quality we want to develop in our students. And in order for us to do that, we have an instructional delivery system where we will be differentiating instruction for all students. It's important that we meet students at their academic need. In addition to that, we'll provide project-based learning activities, small group, whole group instruction, and of course cooperative groupings. Our program, STREAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Reading and Writing, Engineering, Arts, and Math, extremely comprehensive, is meant to address all the needs of students, the 21st century needs. We will be providing Mandarin Chinese, we'll be doing Spanish, as well as reinforcing English skills to all students. Our social-emotional learning piece, of course, will address the bullying needs and aggression and disciplinary issues that occur at school sites, and we'll be hampering those right from the beginning. So under STREAM, of course, this is our overarching focus, and under STREAM, we will be addressing their next-generation science standards, which are extremely new, and we will be providing professional development, mentoring, and coaching for teachers in this area. Technology is extremely crucial in terms of developing students' digital citizenship and ways of knowing how to use the technology and addressing those needs. Obviously, reading and writing is utmost importance to us in developing a balanced literacy program where we address students' literacy skills. Engineering, of course, arts, expressing students' capacities in different ways, and math, the mastery of math standards. So our language piece will be TK through 8. All of our students will be provided Mandarin Chinese, Spanish, and of course, English. And English has a different slant, and I'll explain that in a minute regarding our English language population, our EL students. So through providing these languages, we want to celebrate cultural diversity. We want to provide students a variety of experiences so that they can become better adjusted to the world when they graduate or leave our school. Multilingualism is a benefit, not a barrier. We expect them to excel in academics and obviously create a multi-ethnic global community. So, this is a quote from the ELA/ELD framework in building foundational skills. "Students who develop automaticity with print, recognizing most words instantly, decoding new words rapidly, and encoding words with little effort are best positioned to make significant strides in making meaning with increasingly complex texts, expanding their language, expressing themselves effectively, and gaining and constructing knowledge." So crucial and important for all students, whether they're EL speakers, EL speakers, Spanish speakers, or from other languages or other cultures. If they don't have those foundational skills first, they can't learn science, they can't learn technology, they can't learn engineering, they can't learn anything else. So for us, it's extremely crucial to develop the foundational literacy development. In addition to that, it's important for us to implement that designated, integrated, school-wide ELD program so that we can address the needs of the EL students. And for those students that do not have an EL need, then during that period, it will be our language enrichment period where they will excel in other language development activities to become stronger. We will use GATE programs, GATE strategies, in order to heighten their educational access. Again, we see a multilingual student as an asset, and we will actively support language acquisition and reclassification, extremely crucial before the students go to middle school and high school to be reclassified. So our social-emotional learning piece is a process through which children and adults can better understand, manage, and express emotions and empathy, develop positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. So, in order to develop this, we have to build a culture at our site. And by building this culture of respect, of trust, of understanding, we will gain the value of the whole child, right, which is our focus, which is on the whole child. The program we'll be implementing will be Second Step. And Second Step is a holistic approach to creating a more empathetic society by providing us with tools to take on active roles. Simple as that, we're providing students strategies, we're providing them the tools to be able to handle their emotions in dealing with relationships and other people. So as we start implementing technology, math, science, engineering, it's so crucial that students begin to learn how to work well together. There's that whole big piece of 21st century learning. 21st century skills implementation requires the development of key academic subject knowledge and understanding among all students. Those who can't think critically and communicate effectively must build on a base of key academic subject knowledge. It is a blend of content knowledge, specific skills, expertise, and literacies. So again, it's so crucial for students to be able to be critical thinkers, be able to communicate, collaborate with one another, and also have their own creativity when approaching problems. So again, we'll be combining these skills and knowledge in order to support the systems of standards, of assessments, of curriculum and instruction, professional development, So here in summary is our educational program and philosophy. It's STREAM, which takes care of all the components, all the other core areas, Spanish and Mandarin Chinese, and community building. Obviously, the educational benefit is academic competence, linguistic and cultural, and obviously their social and emotional competence. So again, learning through science, exposure to Mandarin Chinese and Spanish, and social-emotional learning are both the subject matter and the method. Now our instructional approach will be taking into consideration the child's instructional level and raising it to proficiency. Our instructional differentiation will be modified through project-based learning, activities, online blended technology, small and whole group instruction, software and technology, ongoing assessments that will assist teachers to modify their curriculum, and the immediate implementation of need-based interventions. So what we have here is a school that is extremely passionate about meeting the needs of all students, all our subgroups, all our community students, all of students from outside the community, and we are just looking forward to having a working relationship with Newport Mesa Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question while you're up there. What is the role of Padmeeta? And this is a hard name, Suravaskin.
She is part of the team. She's part of our group.
Okay, so is she an administrator?
No, she's just helping. She just helps out with the work that we did with the petition, the work that we're doing with facilities, just kind of working with us.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to the comments from the public. I don't think I have all the cards. So I will, okay, I will now open the public hearing. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to share their comments on the provisions of the charter petition. It is helpful if you state your name and your address for the record. Okay? And our first speaker is Ruth Kobayashi.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Kobayashi. I live in Newport Beach. My address is on the card. Many of you already know that I'm a CDM parent of two recent graduates, but I also spent six years as a trustee at Mariners Christian School while our children attended K through 8 there. So I've seen the unique benefits of both public and private schools. While I'm predisposed to supporting charter schools in general, like anything else, it has to make sense in any given situation. I've read most of the application for this proposed school, and a few things do concern me. Do they bring a specific value that addresses documented, unmet needs in our district? Do they commit to using our tax dollars exclusively for Newport Mesa residents? Do they lean towards a theological approach, given their relationships with SOCA University? Have they proven themselves as a well-established charter school with demonstrated outcomes? The presentation I just heard and the application I read reminds me of very early drafts while I was a board member at a private school for a strategic plan that needed to be redone after many years. The final plan had great detail with measurable goals and looked very different than the initial draft looked. The plan I heard today provided much more of a draft, based on my experience. I have no idea by what I've heard if a student attending this school would get an education at all close to what they would receive in our well-established, free-to-the-public school. Finally, as I sat in the last row, because I have no choice but to leave early this evening, I just watched almost 10 people who appeared to be representing this charter school stand but not put their hands over their hearts for the Pledge of Allegiance, which personally I find objectionable and not consistent with the values of our school district. It appears that their commitment to raising global citizens does not include proper respect for the flag of this country. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, President Snell, members of the board, members of the public, Dr. Navarro. I'm Dr. Britt Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, 1794, and I'm also a vice president for the California Federation of Teachers. And we have, I represent about 1,035 members within Newport Mesa, and CFT also has over 135,000, 30,000 members throughout the state. We've got about a dozen of our site leaders here, and I'm speaking on their behalf, so I'm trying to keep this to three minutes. First off, I want to let you know that if this does move forward and is successful, CFT and our local will work with the members of the Costa Mesa community. We've got about a dozen staff members in Costa Mesa. We'll work aggressively to help organize this school so that it can have the same union benefits that we believe benefit all students in public education. And our belief is that unions are an essential part of having quality public education, because by having a stable workforce that is well-compensated, has quality health benefits, they have a solid pension program, and they have job protections, because they stay in the district for a long time, they become better employees, they become better teachers, they have stronger professional development. That's exactly what we see here in Newport Mesa. We have a group of employees that stay here for decades, and our children benefit as a result. We've also know that researchers have found evidence that we've learned through our Labor Management Institute workshops, where researchers state that unions are good for kids, especially if they have a good rapport with the management. And one of the hallmarks that we have in our collective bargaining agreement is that there are many teacher-led efforts that work with administration to have things like the adjunct duties for after-school programs, for working on the bell schedule, and other curricular areas of emphasis, and that's because we have unionized workers. So while CFT and NMFT remain neutral about charters themselves, because CFT does represent charter schools across the state, both for classified staff and certificated staff, this application itself, I believe, is lacking, and our reps have reported that we don't see how this is different from the current programs we have. We have strong, hands-on science instruction at every elementary school. We have music instruction at every elementary school. We have strong reading programs, intervention systems, and assessment systems, so we know what every single child does and what their reading level is in every classroom in our schools. We have a STEM magnet school. We have dual immersion Mandarin program. We have a dual immersion Spanish program. Parents have choice with the existing schools in our district. Another concerning thing is the classified staff are the backbone of our district, and they are really not referenced in this application. I don't understand how you can have effective instruction without effective classified staff. We're concerned about health and safety, mental health of children, especially in upper grades that need psychologists and counselors for their risk assessments, so we cannot support this application at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the charter school proposal before us and you. I am, as a public school teacher, I am opposed to charter schools, but also for the many reasons known to all of us. But most importantly, because of two crucial positive changes occurring right now in our district, things that have been missing until now. The first one is a community of new families that cares about having a neighborhood school for their children and is willing to work for it. I've learned this from Camaths and talking to a lot of Costa Mesa parents. These families want their kids to attend their neighborhood schools. They are willing to work to rebuild their public neighborhood schools. Leadership is the second one. With redistricting and the school board election right around the corner, we finally have candidates who are of these neighborhoods, who understand them, care deeply about the schools, and are willing to do the work of bringing the families and district together. So to me, the train has already left the station. Positive change is imminent. Why would we want to give up now? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, and members of the board, my name is Wendy Lees. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I found out about this meeting when I was walking yesterday morning. I live near Whittier School, and so they were passing out flyers. And so I asked for a flyer, and I was really surprised that on the flyer, it says that it's opening in June 2019. And I took a picture of it. Opening 2019 on both sides of the flyer, that's a little presumptuous to me. We have a long way to go. I know Martha and Judy, maybe Dana, we were all here when the Mesa Verde parents presented their application. And remember, we sent it back because it was lacking in a lot of details, in compliance with a lot of state and even our goals and standards. And remember, we had that meeting down at the Neighborhood Community Center where we talked about how we could address those needs that the charter school parents in Mesa Verde really wanted. So that charter school never happened because the devil was in the details, and it didn't fit. And to be honest with you, I haven't had time to read the application, but several things that do concern me is, number one, the presumption that they're already, think it's a done deal, and I know just through experience, it's a long time to really go through and make sure everything, all the ducks are in a row. Where's it going to be? The fact that the flyers were passed out in my neighborhood in District 7, and Mr. Davenport's district, concerns me. Is, would that mean that one of the schools on the west side would be used for a charter school? And then how does that affect the neighborhood? Also, special education. My son's older now, but he's dyslexic, and he needed, you know, special attention. Also, the mental health issues that we have, you know, that I teach kids at College Hospital. And we, you have a great program. Mr. Diagostino has worked on the mental health... Mr. Diag, Dr. Diagostino has worked on the mental health aspect of incorporating all those issues. So we have a framework, so I don't know that this is the right time to spend a lot of time on a charter school. I hope that you will review it and quickly make a decision so we can move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Snell, Vice President Metoyer, Clerk Flore, members of the Board, Superintendent Navarro. My name is Dennis Ashendorf. I reside in Costa Mesa Area One. One of the unacknowledged joys of Newport Mesa is that our schools are truly local. Cities and neighbors know their schools. CDM Harbor, Mace, and Estancia and their elementary zones truly matter as a shared experience. Losing the civic unity formed by common institutions should not occur blithely. Charter schools unhinge neighborhood play and create long travel commutes. These costs aren't quantified, but they exist. Also, any charter in our Basic A district that opens its doors to nonresidents robs our children and taxpayers of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yet you are forbidden to take into consideration their financial impacts, which undermines your fiduciary responsibilities. Speaking as a citizen and taxpayer, no charter school should open in our district unless it is spectacular. Let me present one solid reason to reject the particular charter before you. Its elementary math and focus program is a bloated version of Singapore math, and we rejected its middle school Go Math program after a full pilot two years ago. The charter had many other choices: a robust version of Singapore math, another version of Singapore math that goes K-8, called Dimensions Math; from Japan, Sansu Math; or our Bridges and Illustrated Math program that frankly is world-class, something that has been created by us that's incredible. Yet trends cannot be held at bay. You may reject the latest applicant, but there will be others. Looking back, during the past decade, you protected the district from charters. Your successors will maneuver through the onslaught of false success stories. Blaze a new path. Place on your next agenda an approval of a team to search, invite, and design one spectacular charter for Newport Mesa. Concurrently, explore refocusing early college. Possibly a PTech campus may fit our needs better. Or develop an internal magnet using a system such as summits. Be brave. You prevented mayhem, but launch the next war with the eye within the charter storm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vanessa Bzak. I hope I said it right.
Good afternoon, President Snell, esteemed Board members, and Superintendent Navarro. My name is Vanessa Bzak, and I am one of the Board members of International School of Science and Culture, or ISAC. As a charter school leader and an advocate for education, I hope you will be able to see the valuable resource that ISAC can be within your community. It takes a very particular skill set to be a contributive member in our global society today. A solid foundation in STREAM and exposure to two-world languages, together packaged, is going to provide students in your district opportunities that other students only wish that they had. Our mission at ISAC is to create peaceful, collaborative students that make a difference in today's world. As such, the Board hopes to model this and work together with you as a team to make this a reality. I know there's a lot of questions about our educational program, but I can tell you, two of the Board members, myself included, have experience in charters and making outstanding educational programs. Not only that, but we've also had the review and the endorsement of the Charter School Association of California, who could not be here tonight but will be providing their letter. And on top of that, we've had experts in legal, in special education, review the petition to make sure that we weren't missing anything. If there is one thing that I can leave with you here tonight, is just set aside any preconceived notions of what a charter and an authorizer, that relationship, looks like. Instead, set it aside. Let's pave a new way for our kids. Let's create opportunities for them. And in the meantime, create a program that also allows others to come into the community and to create more opportunities for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rowan Treves. I said it wrong, didn't I?
No, that's right.
Is that right? I'm not very good at this.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Rowan Treves. My address for the record is 3051 Johnson Avenue, Costa Mesa. I'm a resident here. I'm a father of two boys that attend Polerino Elementary. My sons are 10 and 7. I'm an environmental engineer. I work with Partner Engineering and Science. They're a company right here in Santa Ana. Is one of their offices, their headquarters in Torrance. I come in here in support of the idea of the charter school. I am a local resident, and I do want to see more opportunity for my two sons to be able to attend a STREAM STEM school. I know that the company that I work with and the industry that I'm in, there's a huge demand for engineers. I see a lot of people coming to Southern California and Northern California to California in the U.S. with these skills from overseas. My background is, I'm Australian. I've been in Costa Mesa since 2010. I work as an environmental engineer on remediation projects across the U.S. I attended an international high school in Kilmore, Australia. It's a small, tiny school, private school, and it was comprised primarily of foreign-language-speaking students. I studied in an immersion high school. I really appreciate the education that I received at that time. I studied extensively in Japanese, and I had a big emphasis in physics, chemistry, and math, and those things provided a wonderful foundation to me so that I could enter college. I studied at the Royal Melbourne Institute of Technology in Melbourne and graduated there with a bachelor's degree, and subsequent to that, worked professionally in Australia and then was hired to come to Costa Mesa. Yeah, I really appreciate the chance to speak to the Board and just emphasize my support of the idea of increased opportunity and access to STREAM and STEM programs. Yeah, I see a huge demand in the global need for engineering technology, and I think that increasing those opportunities for young students at the elementary level and middle school level and even into high school is a really critical thing for Costa Mesa, so I'm in support.
Thank you very much. To Tran. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Good afternoon. Sorry about my croaky voice. I've just been trying to recover from a flu for five days. My name's To Tran. I'm a mother of two, elementary student at Polerino. I'm here to support ISAC from two perspectives: one as a mom and one as a college consultant. My oldest son, Ryan, used to attend Reniceon School International, which was a STEM focus with language immersion. He was only there for a year, but it was a great start for him to become an independent learner. He's doing really well at Polerino right now. But after one year, because of financial reasons, we had to take him out. And we tried for six years to apply at David Magnet, one we could never get into. Even though we appreciate Polerino, there are things that we wish the school could offer as RSI. ISAC was exactly what we envisioned for our kids, because it's not only STEM focus, but STEM plus art and reading. As a college consultant who's working extensively with middle school and high school students, I have seen a huge need in a more STEM-focused education to prepare for college. College admission is more holistic than ever, where academic is not enough. Knowing another language, soft skill, life skill, having characters, positive impact in the community, intellectual curiosity, and I see the vision ISAC has to meet these needs. If you ask me, someone who has studied in Australia, England with full scholarship, and now as a college consultant for all the states in the U.S., if I would send my kids and if I would recommend other students to attend ISAC, my answer is yes, absolutely. What I want to echo on what that lady in the red dress is that I think we have to remove our preconception about charter school. I am committed to the point that I will work with the school as parents, as a community member, to make sure that it works and it will provide top-class education. And I think this should be something that our school district could be proud of. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I hope I'm saying that right. No Carmens. Okay. Okay. Okay, so that closes the public session, and...
We convene.
Okay, so we're adjourning the meeting at 4:42.
Actually, we're not adjourning. He already talked about it.
And we are going into closed session. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, so we're back from closed session at 5:42, and we are adjourning the closed session and meeting.